Good evening. Welcome to the June 27 Lebanon City Council meeting. Our first order of business will be the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, with all my ownership, honor, and gratitude, and with the reverence of the Constitution and its principles.
All right, move on to the roll call members. Madam Corry, call roll please.
Councilman Kincaid.
Present.
Councilman Campbell.
Here.
Councilman Morris.
Here.
Councilman Robertson.
Here.
Councilman Coquelin.
Here.
Councilman Wheat.
Present.
Councilwoman Messenger.
Present.
Okay, move on to old business. First item up is ordinance 2022-18. This is a bond ordinance of the loan agreements and trust indentures for the Fieldhouse project and public infrastructure projects. So Ben, you're going to come forward, and this ordinance is on second reading. Just a quick recap for us?
Yeah, a quick recap of what we talked about last time. This is related to the Fieldhouse project that's being constructed down at State Road 39, just off of the interstate. We've been working with Carden Associates over the last, gosh, probably a couple of years to put this project together, and there are two components to the bonds that will be issued. One component is the construction of the facility itself, and the other is a construction of public infrastructure associated with the project. So that's what this bond ordinance does. It sets up those bonds and the structures associated with those bonds. So that's a real quick recap of what we talked about last time, but do you have to answer any questions, if there are any?
Any questions for Ben this time from council?
No, sir.
We did hear back from the attorneys that there was a slight change needed to the ordinance. I'll have Rob explain what the proposed amendment reads.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Council. So, standing report came back with just one slight comment to, as I circulated in an email earlier, it's in section five of the ordinance. And essentially, they want to make sure the bond ordinance references that the lease rental payment will be deposited in a bond fund, and that's also set out in the trust indenture as well. But they just wanted some clarification in this ordinance. So, that's on page four, as I mentioned earlier in my email, section five of the bond ordinance.
Any questions on that from council?
No, sir.
Okay. I would do need a, I'm going to have to take a motion to amend first, and then we'll read the full ordinance, and then we'll take additional public hearing or public comment on that at this time. So, can I get a motion to amend section five as proposed? So moved.
So yeah.
We have a motion from Brent, second from Dick. All those there say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, the ordinance 2018, 22-18 has been amended. So, Rob, could you please read the ordinance on second reading?
Thank you, Mayor Council. As we addressed at the last meeting, this is a rather lengthy ordinance, so I'm going to hit the highlights for everybody's benefit. But again, ordinance 2022-18 concerns the issuance of certain economic development lease rental bonds and authorizing and approving other actions in association with the Fieldhouse project and the public infrastructure project. This council is authorizing and empowered to adopt this ordinance. The Lebanon Public Building Corporation was established as a nonprofit corporation to do other things, including financing and leasing the buildings and other capital improvements. To foster economic development, the city, the Lebanon Redevelopment Commission, the Building Corporation, and Card Associates Athletic Facilities LLCs, which is the developer, desires to provide for the acquisition, construction, and installation of equipping of an approximate 190,000 square foot indoor sports complex. It's going to feature eight basketball volleyball courts, two fields that will support football, soccer, rugby, lacrosse, baseball, and other activities. Again, that's defined as the Fieldhouse project. And that's together with all the public infrastructure improvements that are defined as the public infrastructure part of the project. Whereas the city desires to issue its taxable economic development lease rental bonds, those are the Series 2022A bonds for the Fieldhouse project, and in the principal amount not to exceed $35 million. The Series 2022B bonds will support the public infrastructure piece of the project in an amount not to exceed $16 million. The Series A bonds will be payable from note payments made by the Building Corporation under a loan agreement between the city and the Building Corporation, and lease payments made by the Redevelopment Commission as less see under a lease agreement, and those are defined as the Fieldhouse lease obligations. This is all backed by the local income taxes or lit as described in here. On May 23 of 2022 pursuant to section 25.5 of the Act, this council adopted an ordinance pledging its monthly distributed share of the lit to the payment of lease rentals due under the Fieldhouse lease obligations. The Series B bonds will be payable for note payments made by the Building Corporation under a separate loan agreement between the city and the Building Corporation, and the lease payments made by the Redevelopment Commission as less see under, again, a certain lease agreement with the Building Corporation. On May 31, 2022, the Lebanon Economic Development Commission conducted a public hearing in accordance with Indiana Code and adopted its resolution finding that the financing of the Fieldhouse project and the public infrastructure project comply with the purposes and provisions of Indiana Code. The Economic Development Commission has approved and recommended the adoption of a form of bond ordinance by this council. It is considered the issue of adverse competitive effect and is approved the forms of and transmitted for approval of this council, the Series A Bond Loan Agreement between the city and the Building Corporation, the Series A Bond Trust Indenture between the city and a trustee to be selected by the city, as well as the Series B Bonds Loan Agreement and the Series B Bond Trust Agreement. These are all defined in this ordinance as the financing documents. Therefore, this council finds and determines that the projects involved in this acquisition, construction, and equipping, that they're defined as economic development facilities, as that phrase is used by the Indiana Code, and that these will improve and promote economic stability, development, and welfare in the city, and will encourage and promote the expansion of industry, trade, and commerce in the city. Further, the proposed financing of the projects and the financing of the costs related to the Series A and B bonds are described in the financing documents in the form of such financing that was approved by the Economic Development Commission, and those are hereby approved. The issuance of the bonds payable solely from the revenues and receipts derived from the financing documents are hereby authorized. Again, it goes further to describe that the Series A bonds will be in an amount not to exceed $35 million, the Series B bonds not in an amount not to exceed $16 million, and that they are to be executed prior to the closing date by the signatures of the mayor and the clerk treasurer, and they will mature on a date not later than 25 years after the date of issuance. They will bear interest in an amount not to exceed 6.5% if tax exempt and 7.5% if taxable. There's further details in here, again, that will describe what the city is required to do and the pledge of certain revenues that are set forth in section five. And then sections six, seven, and eight, as we went through in detail last meeting, as well as nine and 10, describe what the mayor and the clerk treasurer are authorized to do pursuant to the financing documents. The provisions of this bond ordinance and the Series A and B indentures shall constitute a binding contract between the city and the holders of the bonds. This bond ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and execution by the mayor.
Thank you, Rob. Order is under our second reading. Any questions, discussions from council?
No, sir.
Any public comment concerning ordinance 2022-18? Okay, saying no. Would council like to make a motion?
Make a motion. We approve ordinance 2022-18.
You say add? Thank you. We have a motion approved as amended. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Morris. All those there say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? That is adopted unanimously. Thank you, council. Okay, that concludes what I have for old business. All right, from old business from council. Okay, new business then. First item up is a food and beverage request from the Boone County Cancer Society. Joy Kaler. Got a nice big audience for you tonight, Joy.
I do. I'm Joy Kaler. I'm with the Boone County Cancer Society. I'm the executive director. I'm here to ask for a sponsorship for the Battle of the Barbecue. It's our largest fundraiser in August. Last year alone, we raised $80,000. That money all stays here locally. We give it back to cancer patients in Boone County, all of Boone County. So we help with doctor bills, we help with co-pays, we help with transportation. We also give out scholarships. We have a support group, Cooking for Wellness. So, we try to give back as well to the community. Last year, we gave out $65,000 worth of direct assistance to patients. We pay $1,500 worth of medical bills per patient, and of that $65,000, we gave with them hospital approximately $30,000 back to, because we have a pretty seamless exchange with their social worker and myself, making sure nobody falls through the cracks. So, again, I'm just here to request a sponsorship from you guys for August, so.
John, to me with you?
Yes, sir. Excuse me. The Food and Beverage Committee met with Kathy Flannery on Thursday the 23rd. Members of the Food and Beverage Committee at that time was myself, Councilman Wheat, and Jones. The Boone County Cancer Society spoke in behalf of the Battle of the Bands. The Boone County Cancer Society is a 501(c) nonprofit organization. Talked about when it first got started was in August of 2008. This is their 14th year. She talked about how much money they raised last year was $80,000. The members or the number of people that they're addressing this year is 102-plus possible cancer patients in our area that need our assistance or need their assistance. They received no assistance from the American Cancer Society. They are completely funded through their own fundraisers and donations throughout the community. They served last year in 2021 approximately 2,000 people. We talked about the volunteers. She talked about scholarships. There are approximately 30 teams that participated, and each team has 15 to, I'm sorry, 10 to 15 volunteers. Cashiers, 15. Church items, 25. People serving food items, 6. Judges, 15. Six to eight table personnel, people that decorate. Altogether, we don't realize this, but they have over 400 volunteers just to put this one-day event on in our park, and they do very well. And they, one thing she didn't bring up was the date of the event, August 13, which is a Saturday. It goes from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM, and it's going to be located at the Memorial Park here in Lebanon. With all that, they made a very good presentation, and as president or chair of the Food and Beverage Committee, the most our committee can make a recommendation for is $1,500. And with that, I would make that recommendation of $1,500 as a motion for the Boone County Cancer Society.
Okay. We have a motion for $1,500 expenditure for the food and beverage to the Boone County Cancer Society. Is there a second? No, second. Second from Councilman Wheat. All those there say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved. Thank you, council, and thank you, Joy, for all you do. And Joy, teams can still sign up, right?
Yes, yes. And not to make anybody sad or depressed, but like today, for example, I received a phone call from a 32-year-old patient who was stranded at IU North. She's got four children, and she was just told today that she was going to get put on hospice. So I got in my car, went to get her, and brought her home. So, your money goes to really, really good use, and I'm so grateful. So, thank you.
Well, Joy, we appreciate your work, too.
Yes, we do.
It makes a big difference.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, next item up, ordinance 2022-19. Council consider Project Leap annexation. This ordinance on first reading. We'll have Ben introduce it first, then we'll have some representatives from the Indiana Economic Development Corporation speak, and then we'll go from there.
Thank you, Mayor. Go ahead and wake the computer up here. Talk a little bit procedurally. I know we've dealt with a number of annexations over the last couple of years. Just make sure, kind of go over the highlights of procedure. So it's a multiple-step process. This is a 100% voluntary annexation, which means that every person or every property involved within this annexation area has signed a petition requesting annexation to the city of Lebanon. So that is a 100% voluntary annexation, which means we go through a process where it first goes to the Plan Commission, where the Plan Commission reviews and makes a recommendation on the appropriate zoning district to apply to the annexation area if it were to be annexed by the council. Then it comes here. This would be the first, the first reading of the annexation ordinance to the council, and also a publicized public hearing would be tonight. And then on second reading, then, the council would make a decision on the actual annexation itself, which would take place July 11. So this is a second step in the process. If and/or when this were to be adopted, then there is a 30-day waiting period after which the annexation becomes effective. So that's a little bit procedurally. Talk, again, going back maybe to the Plan Commission here. They did hold a public hearing last week and considered the request for the general industrial ID zoning classification. And at the end of the night, they did make a recommendation to place the general industrial ID zoning classification on the entire annexation territory. So that comes to you with a positive recommendation for that zoning classification. If they want to pull up the map, I'll kind of go through a little bit over the, this is a little bit of a unique territory in that it runs, you can kind of see your I-65 runs through the middle of this area. This is the Big Four Trail as it runs out to the west. You can kind of see where it kind of extends out there. US-52 runs to the northwest here. This is 300 north that you see right here. So we got an area that starts essentially at State Road 32 to the south, runs along the west side of the interstate, and when it gets up in the area 300 north, and it crosses over to the northeast of the interstate here up to the north. So you got a couple of distinct areas here that kind of beauty in terms of the annexation runs along kind of this southeast side here, up along the interstate is where the kind of beauty is determined. And then, of course, in terms of with Indiana statute and Indiana law relating to annexations, has to be at least one-eighth contiguous. So a surveyor has certified that it does meet all the kind of beauty requirements as required by law. And then, again, as I mentioned, then, the Plan Commission has recommended the general industrial zoning classification. Oh, the applicant talked a little bit about their goals and strategy associated with this, but the idea is here is to create a large innovation district for advanced manufacturing, research, and development related to emerging technologies. And so, excuse me, when you're looking at some of those uses in that category, they did need the general industrial classification in order to accommodate those uses. With that being said, though, we have worked with the applicant to prohibit certain uses that are associated with that zoning district for uses that we're not expecting in this area, don't want to be in this area. And it's, of course, it happens right when I get up here and start talking. We do have about a page and a half list of uses that we are prohibiting from the zoning district voluntarily, and it's part of the annexation ordinance that's before you tonight, to make sure that the unwanted uses will not be allowed within this area. As part of that, they did also provide a narrative and concept plan, so this gives you a little bit of an idea. Certainly, in an area of this size, with only some of the, one user at this point identified Lily, I'm sure the state will talk a little bit about that project. There is one user that's been identified that's looking up in this northeast area. Given the size of this and the scale of it and the, you know, the kind of the flexibility that's built into this, they don't have a very specific plan yet. That'll be developed over time as users are identified. This gives you an idea of some of those use areas. This is an advanced manufacturing node that you see to the north here. There is a headquarters and research and development area that's kind of in the center section here that would be between the Big Four Trail and US-52. Then another area between the Big Four Trail and State Road 32 that would be reserved again for that advanced manufacturing user. So that's generally speaking, the concept plan, everything you see here in green would be reserved for green corridors, green infrastructure, amenities like that. So, again, there's the Big Four Trail as it runs through, so you can kind of see, that will remain the Big Four Trail. It will remain City Lebanon property as an amenity to this area. So that's a quick rundown of the annexation. Again, I said this is a 100% voluntary annexation. This is before you tonight. With that, I'd be happy to answer the general questions about the procedures, and then I'll be happy to turn it over to the applicant, let them talk a little bit more about the Project Leap District.
Yeah, I've got a question, Ben, and this may go to Rob. And I was sitting up here, people saw me smiling. I guess I missed this the first time I read it through. It's good to know we can't have an adult drive-in in this.
That's correct.
This area.
Those are conditional uses in the general industrial zoning district. We certainly didn't expect those or want those out here.
But seriously, it says voluntary prohibited uses. If we bring it in as industrial one or whatever that classification is, and they decide to put in the adult theater, how much, what do we have in the way of teeth to enforce that?
It's not permitted. I mean, that's.
Just because it says voluntary?
Yeah, so this becomes part of the ordinance, so that would become law, just as everything else in our UDO. So essentially, then, if somebody came in and asked to put that out there, we would just say no.
Any further questions for Ben this time? Okay. I'd like to invite up David Rosenberg from the Indiana Economic Development Corporation. He'll kind of give a little bit overview of the vision for the Leap area.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I am David Rosenberg, Executive Vice President of the IEDC. There's been a lot of passion and conversation around this initiative, and I appreciate the discussion. I think it's what makes the city and Indiana as a whole great. My goal here is to ensure that the correct information is available to the public and members of this council, so that people can make an informed decision about this initiative moving forward. There's been a lot of confusion around and disagreement around private property rights, and this is 100% voluntary annexation of those private-owned properties. And so we just want to make that very clear from the outset. If we can go to the PowerPoint here. So why a site strategy initiative? As Indiana's lead economic development agency, the statutory mission of the IEDC is to meet the needs of the market to attract and retain business here in Indiana. The Indiana brand has been on fire recently, as we expect over $16 billion worth of deals to close just in the first six months of 2022. This nearly doubles the annual record set last year at $8.7 billion. However, there's more we must do to meet the demands of the market. Embarking on a site strategy initiative will allow the state to meet the needs and speed of the market when a company is contemplating which state in which it wants to locate. Deals that used to take 18 to 24 months to make a decision are now being made in about six months. High-wage, high-growth companies are looking for sites that are ready for construction. We project we've lost over $20 billion worth of deals that others, because other states have implemented the site strategy initiative. These include states like Ohio, Michigan, Tennessee, North Carolina, Texas, Georgia, among others. So before jumping in, and just to be extremely clear, even with this site strategy initiative, local officials will continue to have the annexation and zoning ownership over those decisions. These are not things that a state or company can dictate to locals, either here in Boone County or anywhere around the state. It comes to local bodies like this. Thanks to the leadership of this council, Mayor Gentry, Commissioners Boone EDC, and so many others, Boone County is continually of interest to the business community as a top place to locate. Being on the half-court line of Purdue and Indy, along with the low cost of doing business and the great people, Boone County is extremely attractive to companies. But I want to be very, very clear of what the vision is not for this site. We've heard a lot of rumors and a lot of bad information put out there. So I want to put out publicly what this land is not to be, and reemphasize that local officials have control over what this land can and cannot be. What we do envision with this land can potentially be is a high-wage economy of the future innovation and research district, attracting high-wage employees. Further, with the industries we are targeting, there are true national security implications for reshoring these industries and ensuring we have a strong supply chain. We're also partnering with Purdue University, Department of Agriculture, Agrenovis, and others to ensure we maintain the agricultural innovation of this area. And we're very appreciative of Eli Lilly seeing this vision and becoming the anchor tenant of the site with a $2.1 billion investment. Eli Lilly will employ 500 people making very high wages, and they expect that Eli Lilly will own the land once the deal with the state is complete. Again, this annexation is 100% voluntary, and the IEDC supports the additional refinement on the zoning to exclude things that we do not contemplate being in this area. This is from Resource Triangle Park in Durham, Raleigh, North Carolina. Again, we're taking pieces of this, implementing here. This is more of the office-based section. As you can see, tree lines, green space, trails, paths. We want it to be a true amenity with a good aesthetic plan for the community. And while no, we're here tonight to discuss these 1,400 acres Ben mentioned, I know there's a lot of Ben discussion about land that moves further west of I-65. I want to emphasize we are at the very beginning of those discussions. It will be a multi-decade conversation and engagement with the community and local officials to determine what that vision is and what industries we want to try to attract out in that area. And I think there's a strong partnership between the state and local that is crucial, not only for the economic development, but also to solving the long-term utility issues that the county is undertaking, and also to bring much-needed infrastructure improvement to the area as well. to the area as well. So that was a high-level overview. We appreciate the time tonight. We're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for David from the council this time?
Yeah, I've got a question. One of the things I've heard from various constituents is talk of involuntary annexations, which I believe, speaking for the council, we're not big fans of, and eminent domain, which is taking people's property against their will. Is that even been discussed or is that in any intention on the part of the state?
So the, as far as the annexation, 100% voluntary. We know that was a mandate from Mayor Gentry, Commissioners from the very beginning. 100% voluntary and you will not entertain anything but, and that's what we bring for you, before you tonight. The IEDC, our agency, cannot do eminent domain for economic development projects. As we look at infrastructure and indi, obviously they have that ability, but our agency in terms of true economic development cannot do eminent domain.
When you're out researching, researching a company come in or a big company comes in and talks to you or whatever, when does it come back to the locals that you like this thing, this looks good, this is the right area, let's go talk to the locals? How does that work and when will that happen?
Yeah, it takes a lot of different forms. Probably the most common is the company or site selector will put out an RFP, will respond, you know, with four to six different sites, let the, let the locals know that we're submitting for that site. And then as that process goes through the down select and if Indiana's still in the loop, then we join forces, really start to see what that investment package could look like for the company and pursue it from there.
What if it's a company you like, but it's a company we don't like?
I think that's definitely up for discussion. You know, like I said, for this park, it is that high-wage economy of the future. And so we are not looking at traditional business park, industrial complex, warehousing, logistics. These are the bio-life sciences, microelectronics, ag science. Those economies of the future that bring high-wage workers to the area.
Any additional questions? Any final thoughts, David?
Thank you.
Kent, she's ending.
Mr. Mayor, my name is Kent Franzen. I'm privileged to be the attorney for the petitioners in this proceeding. This is all that we had planned to present this evening. We are here, several people from the IEDC are here, be happy to answer your questions either now or after the public has had an opportunity to make their comments heard.
Thank you, Kent. Appreciate it. Okay, this time then we will have a public hearing on ordinance 2020. Yes, thank you. Good call, Rob. Thank you. Let's have, let's have the ordinance read on first reading, please.
Mayor, Council, ordinance 2022-19 again concerns annexing a certain territory to the city of Lebanon. Whereas the owners of approximately 1,400 acres of land located in unincorporated Boone County but contiguous to the city, and that's defined as the LEAP annexation area, have petitioned to have their land voluntarily annexed into the city. This council is legally authorized to annex lands that qualify for annexation as defined in Indiana code. Whereas the LEAP annexation area is a transformational economic development opportunity for the state of Indiana, Boone County and the city, having already attracted an anticipated $2.1 billion investment from Eli Lilly and company for construction and operation of new manufacturing and research and development facilities within the LEAP annexation area and with other not yet secured but anticipated users for other land within the LEAP annexation area. Whereas this council supports the proposed development and the use of the LEAP annexation area in order to attract and support new business investment with a focus on attracting netbeans, manufacturing, agro-science, bioscience, and other economy of the future businesses that will yield diversified tax base and high-paying job opportunities for local residents. Whereas the LEAP annexation area consists of 56 separate parcels containing approximately 1,400 acres owned by 32 landowners, not including the adjacent public roadways. The LEAP annexation area is identified in Exhibits A and B. Whereas this council finds that 100% of the landowners comprising the LEAP annexation area have signed and filed a voluntary annexation petition with the council under Indiana code. Whereas the LEAP annexation area does not include any parcel of land for which its owners have not filed and expressed written consent to this annexation. For the sake of clarity, the LEAP annexation area does not include three separate parcels of land that are surrounded by the LEAP annexation area, and again, a reference in Exhibits A and B. Whereas as authorized by Section 1.8B of the city's Unified Development Ordinance, the council has received and considered a development proposal concept plan which provides sufficient information about the intended development and use of the LEAP annexation area to justify the assignment of general industrial ID zoning classification to the annexation area. Whereas the City of Lebanon Advisory Plan Commission held a public hearing and recommended zoning classification for the proposed annexation area at its meeting on June 21st, 2022, and forwarded back at 22-44 to this council with a favorable recommendation to assign the general industrial ID zoning classification for the LEAP annexation areas subject to certain permitted or conditional uses to be voluntarily excluded and prohibited. Whereas in accordance of Indiana code, on June 27th, 2022, this council will hold a public hearing regarding the petition for annexation of the LEAP annexation area. Whereas the council says has adopted but will adopt a fiscal plan for the annexation of the LEAP annexation area in accordance with the Indiana code. That'll be addressed at the next meeting. Whereas this council has determined after due consideration that this annexation satisfies the contingency requirements under Indiana code and which are described in Exhibit C. Whereas parts of the LEAP annexation area are contiguous to public roadways and rightways under Indiana code, and those portions of such roadways and rightways are to be annexed into the city. Whereas this council has considered the statutory criteria for annexation and finds that the legal process and requirements for this super voluntary annexation have been satisfied. Therefore, Section 1 incorporates the foregoing recitals. Section 2 describes again the annexation area that's generally located on the north and west sides of the city, on both sides of Interstate 65, that are set forth again in Exhibits A and B, and those are eligible for annexation into the city and are declared annexed into a part of the city of Lebanon. Section 3 talks about contiguity. The LEAP annexation area meets the contiguity requirements for annexation under Indiana code. At least one-eighth of the external boundaries of the LEAP annexation area coincides with and adjoins existing city boundaries. Those contiguity calculations again are attached on Exhibit A and the certification is in Exhibit C to this ordinance. Further, the LEAP annexation area consists of multiple parcels that form a single unified territory. The LEAP annexation areas to further include contiguous public highways and rightways to the public highways which are adjacent to the LEAP annexation area pursuant to Indiana code. Section 4 describes the council district, the LEAP annexation area will be assigned to Council District 3 and shall become a part thereof immediately upon the effective date of the ordinance. Section 5 discusses zoning. Upon the recommendation of the plan commission, the LEAP annexation area is hereby assigned general industrial ID zoning classification. However, the LEAP annexation area will not accommodate all uses allowed under ID zoning classification. Those predominant uses identified on Exhibit D are excluded and prohibited from the LEAP annexation area except upon the city's approval of a petition for rezoning, a variance, a waiver, or special exceptions in accordance with the laws of Indiana and the city's Unified Development Ordinance. The effective date of this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon passage by this council, required publication and filing, and upon the expiration of the applicable 30-day waiting period.
Thank you, Rob. Now the ordinance has been read. Any further comments, discussion from council?
No, sir.
Okay, at this time then I will open the public hearing on ordinance 2022-19. We are, I know we're in a full crowd tonight, so I would like to keep comments around five minutes. I'm not going to be super mean about it, but just please try to wrap your comments in five minutes and do, please do try not to repeat other comments that have been made before you. So if you'd like to comment on ordinance 2022-19, please set forward the podium, state your name for the record as well as your address.
Good evening. My name is Carrie Douglas and I don't like giving out my address to the world where I live.
What is your address, ma'am? Sorry, we need name and address for minutes.
I'm getting ready to say that.
Okay.
1300 North State Road 75, Thorntown, Indiana 46071. I wanted to come here tonight as the president of Boone County Preservation Group, and I brought all of this with me, not that I'm going to talk to you guys about it, but this was all I was willing to carry. I wanted to, to start out by saying that the public is doing some things we've never really thought we would do before. I'm spending my free time reading, researching, educating. I'm having conversations that were never previously considered social conversations. One of the things that was really brought present to me was that the city council has never voted in favor of an oppositional group. And I thought, well, that's great because we should not be seen as an oppositional group. We are a member of Boone County, or we are a group of residents that live in Boone County, both inside the city limits and outside the city limits. We have members all the way down to Whitestown and Zionsville. So please don't see us as an oppositional group that's coming up here to speak tonight. We are here to present information, not just complaints. I wanted to hit on the fact that you guys are sitting up there to protect us, not in a, in a back-and-forth kind of way. We have concerns and the community has united together, forming this incorporated association to voice those concerns in an effective manner for everyone involved. This situation here, this new development, it's not an unprecedented thing. It's pretty common everywhere, but it is unique for this, for this community. This development's been referred to last week as we didn't have a looking glass into the future, but we do have a looking glass. We do have guidance. We have the comprehensive plan for the county. We have a comprehensive plan for the city. That's exactly what those are. The values that these list are the things that we're just wanting to ensure and be heard about. We've, we've had answers. I know tonight I saw a few things that just shows there's a need for more communication between us. People in Boone County don't want to see the Research Triangle. It wasn't farm ground first. We don't, we don't want to see a park out there. We want to see crops out there. We want to see it utilized like it is now. It's beautiful and it's productive and it has purpose. These comprehensive plans talk about preserving the heritage that we have here already. I want to bring attention to you have a responsibility not just to attract new people and new development, but you have a responsibility to the people that are already here, to the people that already came here. I came here as an adult to raise my family. That's why we live here. I know that development's coming. I want to see it happen. We have to. But it, it's very concerning with the speed that this is happening. And I just found out tonight that the site strategy initiative, you mentioned six months. This is being pushed through in a matter of weeks. I was very glad to hear all the things that are in the ordinance and the restrictions that are going to be taken into effect. That's great. But there's a lot more to it that hasn't been discussed. There's the effect on the utilities. There's where is this water coming from? We've heard a lot of speculation, but these are things that need to be addressed before this is all put in place. You have a responsibility, the people who currently live here in Boone County, to make sure they don't have water disruptions, they don't have electric service disruptions, that they don't have flooding. I've spoken to people on the water board. I've, I've learned a lot more about watersheds than I ever thought I would. These things need to be addressed ahead of time and in a timely manner. I understand that normally this process would take 12 to 14 months. I appreciate that we would miss out on a lot of development if that were the case, but these, these answers need, need the respect they deserve and the time put into it. We're also, you're going to see more members of our group come up here and speak, who are not just coming up here to complain. We have information. We have questions. We want to maybe brainstorm some things that you guys haven't thought of. I'm going to just stop now, but we appreciate what you're doing and the value, or the challenge that's in front of you.
Thank you for your comments. Is your public comment?
Good evening. I'm Brian Daggy, 2005 West 250 North, East of Rag Road. Appreciate the opportunity to talk to the board tonight, to raise some questions and some issues, and to continue the conversation of how we can see something like this done in a responsible fashion. Now I'll start by saying I don't envy your job because you're trying to balance growth, jobs, local community values, and at the same time, you're responsible for protecting the property rights of the other individuals in the community whenever you change a zoning classification like this. This is a big change for the area. Majority of that area is owned ag and is prime ag farmland. It's not heavily populated, but the people that are out there will have quite a shock to have a change to industrial, general industrial. I understand Eli Lilly needs that on those 600 acres. I understand it's probably a given that Eli Lilly is going to get what they want, and I understand that. One of my concerns is the fact that the remaining acres of this, well, about 800 acres primarily on the west side of 65, is also being given that industrial zoning, the highest and most intensive use zoning without having any prospective users, any tenants lined up, or any idea who may come in there. And while I appreciate Mr. Franzen talking about what Eli Lilly is willing to do in terms of giving up some of the prospective uses under industrial zoning, I know he also volunteered they maybe have other ones they could give up, and I would suggest you encourage that and get those in writing as well. Will those same restrictions apply to the remaining acreage? And even at that, industrial allows a very heavy, intensive use of an area that hasn't had that in the past. Again, without the planned tenants, without any use like that, it would seem to me like a planned use development plan, particularly on the 800 acres on the west side, we don't appear to have any really pressing need for it to occur right now, would be a good use of letting the community become involved, to have some ideas brought into it and develop in a responsible fashion and help protect the property rights of the other people in the area. I strongly encourage you to look at that. Again, the general industrial use is very intensive. We've seen in other areas of the county where that's been used and complaints coming in later that, you know, there weren't sufficient protections in terms of setbacks, building height, lighting, noise abatement, loading dock placement, things like this, that for a very practical matter are going to be important to the people in that area. And I speak to somebody who's going to be adjacent to that area within about 500 feet, so it's very important to me, as well as the other people that you see around here. I guess bottom line, I think that giving the remaining that acreage general industrial use without anybody in mind for it is just giving away the store, so to speak, without knowing what you're going to get in return. I understand what you want to accomplish here, what you want to do in terms of development, but I don't think there's a reason you don't, that you have to give those away without talking about a planned use development and protecting the property rights of other people involved. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Any additional public comment?
I live at 715 North Caldwell Road. I am a first-generation farmer. I've put out 45 crops. This is my 45th crops. I'm a Purdue graduate. I was on the Purdue land judging team. I have helped coach Western Boone FFA to a national championship land judging contest. So I guess my expertise is in land. Boone County is very blessed with the natural resource of highly productive soils, and that is evident in 2020, Boone County had the average, the highest average corn yield in the state of Indiana. And much of this land is in this area that we are talking about annexing. More concerning is the 11 square miles that is in the stage two planning. And I've got a couple of quotes here. All this information, I have a copy of that I will give to each one of you to back up what I have said. Now this is, I'm going to read three sentences from an article. "The world will lose 250 million crop acres by 2050." According to the estimates of the Food and Agriculture Organization of the United Food and Agriculture Organization of the United Nations. If society doesn't do a better job of making land use decisions and taking care of the soil, he is afraid hunger and food insecurity will be much more prevalent in 30 years when the world population exceeds 9 billion." From 2001 to 2016, 11 million acres of agricultural land was paved over, converted, or fragmented, according to the study. That is pretty staggering. Mr. Franzen said that 1,400 acres isn't going to make a big dent. You add that plus 11 more square miles, plus all the other land that has been taken out of production, plus the 11 million, that's a big chunk. I would like to give out this information if I may.
You can leave it down there and they can pass it down.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Is that a clue testimony, sir? Leave your comments. Any additional public comment?
Hello, my name is Burt Reese. My address is 6519 North, 350 West, Thorntown, Indiana. So during the plan commission meeting on June 21st, I brought up attention to semantics and the use of language in the petitions, specifically around using voluntary and the use of consent versus being an active petitioner on the petition. So in general, the lack of clarity and transparency compounded with the expedited nature of this annexation has led to questions from many parties impacted and involved in this process. During the plan commission meeting, questions regarding capital and non-capital impacts were brought up by residents and commission members. So a written fiscal plan, in theory, should alleviate these questions. Mr. Sheen stated a fiscal plan will be brought to the next meeting, but the importance of this fiscal plan should not be understated. To start, we will review a statement regarding fiscal plans from our friends of the South in Whitestown. So from one of their proposals, so Patch Super Voluntary Annexation Number 21, or 2021-34, whereas in Indiana Code 36433.1 requires that the municipality has developed a written fiscal plan and has established a definite policy by resolution of the legislative body that meets the requirement set forth in Indiana Code 364313 prior to annexation of the property. Whereas, it is desired the Town Council of the Town of Whitestown, State of Indiana, to provide such written fiscal plan and comply with Indiana law. But what stands out in this is it further states the fiscal plan is offered for the purpose of informing the public and landowners in the annexation area with regard to the extension of municipal services as a result of the annexation. So the Whitestown annexation falls under 3643-51, so a petition signed by 100% of landowners. So the same thing that we have here tonight. So what are the specifics of these fiscal plan requirements? Indiana Code 36433.1, written fiscal plan, states that in an annexation under Sections 5 or 5.1, so again, the 100% petition by landowners that has been signed, the municipality shall establish and adopt the written fiscal plan before adopting the annexation ordinance. So let's talk about what's in a fiscal plan. So 364313D. The fiscal plan must show the following. The cost estimates of planned services to be furnished to the territory to be annexed. The plan must present itemized estimated costs for each municipal department or agency. The plan for the organization and extension of services, the plan must detail the specific services that will be provided and the dates the services will begin. And I'm not going to go through all of them, but just some examples here. So the services of capital improvement nature, including street construction, street lighting, sewer facilities, water facilities, and stormwater drainage facilities, will be provided to the annexed territory within three years after the effective date of the annexation in the same manner as those services are provided to areas within the corporate boundaries. So again, we've had a lot of questions. We hear a lot about the water situation, utilities. So these are all things that should be addressed in a fiscal plan. So we have yet to be provided with this core information. So again, a lot of questions about what's going on. How is this going to impact the community? How is it going to impact this annexation area? So it is vital to the annexation process and for the feasibility analysis of this proposal to have this information. So the missing pieces of this puzzle, they need to be constructed before any decisions are made and before we make a jump to say yes on this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you for testimony. Any additional public comment?
Hi there. My name is Tracy Heine. My address is 4520 West 300 North in Lebanon. I've lived in, at that house for five years. Before that, I lived for 15 years on North Meridian, actually in town. So my concern is about our community because I do treasure the community that we have here. So my question for you is what would get you to cast a no vote for the annexation? If the first thing in your head is nothing, who are you representing? Of course, it's your job to represent your constituents. We all know that. But have you been provided with data to help give you insight into their views, their questions, their thoughts regarding the proposal? Has there been a formal poll or questionnaire that provides valid data that makes you confident that voting yes is what the community you serve wants? There is petition regarding the larger developments, not just this one, but the entire development proposal on change.org. It's been signed by 2,300 people who are deeply concerned. That's a lot of folks. Do their views matter? Are they being taken into consideration? How many out there have not had a voice to express their view? This is a big deal. It's a huge deal. If these projects go through, they will forever and completely change Lebanon, Boone County, and our entire community. I would like you to reflect on what brought you to Lebanon and what has kept you here. Do you live here because you were just waiting for this brawl to reach us? Or do you live here because you like our small community? You like our schools, our Fourth of July festivities, the 4H fair, our beautiful square? Many people here take these things for granted, that they'll be here forever and always, but these things can disappear so quickly, especially when short-sighted decisions are made. I would like you to reflect on what makes Lebanon special. Do we not want to have our own identity in Lebanon? Do we want to be like every other city around Indy and why? I've heard some Lebanon decision-makers say things like, why should I say no with regards to the annexation? Really, why should you say yes? If you want to drastically change the city, shouldn't you have to be the one substantiating your decision, not the vice versa? The folks in Lebanon that are already here, they chose to live in the town as it is now. If you want to change it so significantly, you would think that you should be the ones to say why the answer should be yes to annexation. Development and progress and growth and evolution can be good, of course. They can be great. But projects like what are being proposed should not be rushed. We cannot get the farm ground back, the farmland that's been in families for generations. You, if you build what's being proposed, you will never get that farmland or that farming heritage back. You can't make a mistake with this decision because there's no going back. What we have now is priceless and irreplaceable. So if you are not 100% certain about your yes or your no, let's slow down and take a breath. Let's do some research and impact analysis on our community and our residents that would enable us to make a more confident and informed decision. This is for sure not what I want personally. I grew up in a suburb of Chicago. My parents built our house in an unincorporated area of town. Our house backed up to farm ground. The city had 40,000 people in 1980, and there are 150,000 people there now. So 110,000 people added in 40 years. My parents were born in that town. Their parents were from that town, but that's a place that we no longer recognize, and none of my family is there anymore, is not the community that they wanted to live in. I don't want that for Lebanon. I like the Lebanon now. If you know with absolute certainty that the people of Lebanon and the community want this drastic change, then of course, it's your job to act accordingly. But if you don't know, or if you're not sure, I really, I kind of beg you to slow the thing down. This is so big. Please just slow it down. Make sure you're making a decision that this is what the people who elected you want, and that this is what we want as a community for our children. So thank you for your time, both now and the time you put into making your decision. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Any additional public comment?
Can you hear me?
Yep. You proved the microphone from last time.
I wasn't heard at all. Can you all hear me?
Yeah.
All right. Well, I have a soft voice and asthma, so I cannot shout. I'm just hoping it's picking up. I'm Diana Freeman. I reside at 8440 North, 200 West, Thorntown, which is actually rural mechanicsburg near Dole's Tree Farm. I want to express my agreement with the individuals who've already preceded me here at the podium. And I want to reiterate some comments I made last week to the planning commission. I find it particularly egregious that this project was dropped from the sky on Boone County residents. The process that we've experienced thus far displayed a lack of transparency that's disrespectful to county residents and our county officials, particularly those who are most directly affected. I shop in Lebanon. I go to church on the other side of Thorntown, and I know a lot of people in the affected area. I understand what the effect is going to be on the county, on northwest Boone County. I have a respect for the preservation of farmland. I hope you do too. I was raised on a farm. I too, like Al, am a graduate of the Purdue University School of Agriculture. And I live where I live, on a dead and gravel road, like many people do, because we enjoy our rural life and we respect agriculture, we respect farmers, and we respect what farmers do to our communities and for our country. They feed us. I don't, like probably most people, I had no idea this was happening. My thought is that growth would continue from the south, coming up through the southern part of Boone County up towards Lebanon. So it was quite a shock to me when I heard that this project was coming in, in the location that it is, just north of town, and it's planning to go west for several miles. I grew up on a 500-acre farm. 600 acres is roughly a square mile. So you're talking thousands of acres. I know the bulk. I have a, it's easy for me to visualize the amount of land that's going to be affected and how that will affect the community. So the character of the community will change. There's no doubt about that. And if you ask the folks where I live, I don't think they will say that they want the character of their community to change. So I hope that you will consider that in your decision today. Like the others, I ask you to step back, take some time, talk to people. This is something that's being imposed on people who are not currently under your jurisdiction. And I consider the idea of a voluntary annexation a polite fiction, illegal fiction. This not really is what's happening. We all know that, don't we? We know that. Let's have some regard for the northernmost citizens of Boone County and stop and think this through. That's all I ask you to do. Stop and think this through. A lot of good points have been brought up tonight, and they deserve your attention. Thank you.
Thank you for testimony, Diana. Any further comment?
Hello. My name's James Heine. I live at 4520 West 300 North. I'm not a public speaker. I had to write my address on here so I wouldn't forget it because I'm so nervous. But I just wanted to, and I understand that, that me as an individual doesn't, my individual opinion does not cover every, you know, point of Boone County. I understand that. So, but I want to get out in the open right away that Lebanon is where I grew up and where I chose to make my home and raise my kids. And I am sad, saddened that Lebanon is changing, and I understand that it is changing. I work in Indianapolis. So I just want to say, you know, I am against this huge development. Just say that right off the bat. So you can, you know, take my opinion for what it is. I work in Indy, and I come back here to home, hit here on the way home, right? To my little, what I call an oasis from urban life, you know? And just a quick story. One time last, not one time, it started with one time, but it became many times. I would come home from work, and at the end of my driveway, there would be people, strange people, in my driveway, flying drones around. And I thought, well, you know, farmers are smart people, right? They're probably monitoring how the crops are going and all these things like that. And so I wave, you know, and I drive around my own driveway around the people. You know, who's your hospitality? How you doing? And I think to myself, in retrospect, those people weren't there monitoring the growth of the corn, you know? They were there to, to, you know, see what other uses the land around me, or even potentially my own land, could be to someone else. And I got to thinking, well, what would happen? I mean, that's my own sob story. I'm sorry, my voice is cracking. I'm just, I used to actually do like improv comedy and stuff like that in college. But when you put this much of passionate kind of feeling behind your words, it just, I can't handle the anxiety of it. And I thought to myself, what would be my concern for the community, right? Can Lebanon handle all this proposed growth, right? I, I mean, I already get stuck in traffic on the way to Kroger, right, on 39. I mean, it's, it's, I mean, do we want to be fishers? I mean, do we want to, can Lebanon handle the traffic? Can Lebanon handle emergency services, right? Is there enough policemen? I appreciate what they do for us, right? They got a freaking tough job, right? Is there enough policemen? Is there enough fire to support? If Lebanon grows by 1,400 acres or 7,000 acres, let's say theoretically, that's almost doubling the size of Lebanon. Does that mean we double the size of the police force? Is Witham Hospital, is that going to be big enough? I don't know that that's going to be big enough. They just did a huge... They just did a huge expansion, right? But can they handle, if Lebanon grows by 75, 100%, I mean, is that a thing? The police, can they handle that? If I find strangers at the end of my driveway, and I decide I don't want to be hospitable, can I call the police and have them come and chase those people off my property? Are they going to be stuck in traffic, or, you know, or there's just not enough of what goes on? And then if, if, if we decide that we need more police, more fire, more healthcare, more, or, you know, like hospital, who pays for that, right? The money that I pay in taxes to the state comes back to me to support this huge project that I don't even want, you know, I don't support. I have to pay to fight against my own self? I don't understand that. Does Lilly pay for some of this, like, the streets that are going in? I mean, or is Lebanon going to pay for all this? I don't understand any of these things. I don't think anybody who's a resident of this area has had a very satisfying, you know, description, or, you know, plan.
You have six minutes, sir, if you want to wrap it up?
Okay. I'm sorry. So I'll just finish up real quick. And then I guess, I guess if I had a little bit more time, I would consider other, obviously other points, like environmental impact. Is our, Lilly wants to come in and create a chemical plant? I mean, is the air going to smell like chemicals? Or, are, you know, this just isn't, I think, what I signed up for, coming to live to Lebanon. And I don't understand how the property values of anybody, or any of these things, are going to be good when we bring chemical plants and, and things like that into an agricultural town. And it's not an agricultural city, because I think so, it's just, it's because that's been our history. I mean, we have a bridge going over 39, right, with the little panels on it of the farm ground, right?
Final thoughts, sir, please?
Would you suggest that we take those panels off and put factories on them instead? Or, you know, or chemical plants, or, you know, battery factories, or whatever? I just feel like our heritage is, is where it is, and to expand it at such a huge rate is, is going to just be detrimental to Lebanon as a whole.
Thank you for your testimony, sir.
Thanks for giving me all the time.
Yep. Further public comment?
My name is Ken Jansing. I live at 1730 Dead End Road, which is right in the middle. Our house is right in the middle of this area, the center area of your annexation. My biggest concern is, we moved there, it's been about 10 years now, and we've dumped a lot of money in that property, and tried to get it up to where it's comfortable for us, and where we enjoy it, and where our grandkids can come and have a little tough place to play. And my biggest concern is, what happens to that property if you put industrial zoning completely around it? Is it going to, is it going to just devalue to nothing? And what I guess what I'm, what I'm saying here, I can understand the need on the north side, and from the trail down to the south of 32, that looks like an area that's already been earmarked for industrial expansion. Same way down 32, down 39, from 32 to 39. I see it from the south side of Lebanon all the way to Whitestown. They're improving the roads, they're improving that Perry Worth Road, the Funnich Roads. And I'm assuming that's for industry, just the kind of thing you're talking about. So I would think that, you know, if you're going to use this, this land for that, maybe is it, has somebody looked at all the land around here? Is there a possibility it could be somewhere else, besides right where you're, where you're going to tear up all this farmland and, and zone everything around to be industrial? And I know you guys say there's going to be a limit on, on what kind of industry you're going to allow in there. Well, five years down the road, if that doesn't happen, somebody comes in and wants a variance, I'm sure you're going to give it to them. Because that's, the whole idea of zoning it industrial is to, is to use the land. So that's, my biggest concern is, is what happens to that property, just on the north side of, of that trail. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Further testimony?
I live at 1250 West 450 North, Lebanon. I lived in Lebanon as a kid, and was relocated when my mother moved me away by marrying a farmer, of all things, in northern Indiana. 20 years ago, I moved back to Lebanon, thinking I was being farsighted, because I was still working full-time for, wait for it, Eli Lilly and Company. That's right, I gave them 40 years of my life. And I finally was able to retire onto my little bit of acreage here, north of Lebanon, which I developed into a performance horse breeding operation, and made a little bit of money, because you never make a lot of money breeding horses. I am appalled at the lack of communication, the lack of transparency, the lack of notice given to we residents, and particularly my own selfish interests, because I must have some really bad karma working for me, because Eli Lilly is building right across the road from my ranch. I'm not here to plead my case, because this is going to happen, it's a done deal. And I can tell you, I heard years ago about them, and I saw them surveying over 65 on 300 North for the interchange that's going in. Why on earth is there a need for interchange on 300 North? Oh, and then a few weeks ago, voila, we find out that Eli Lilly is putting a biocam tech facility in, right down the road. Hmm, is there a link? I think so. I hope each and every one of you thinks about how you're going to answer the concerns of people who are living here now. And, yeah, I'm pretty upset, because I'm a little bit old to start over. And unfortunately, I wasn't one of those who was offered all the big bucks for my property. I don't really have the option of relocating unless I want to put my stuff up for sale, and hope that these new plans aren't going to impact the future buyers. And I don't really want to start over. But if, the prospects aren't very bright. As I said, I'm not pleading a case, I'm not asking you not to do this, because you're going to do it. It's, we all see the handwriting on the wall. But I wish you people would be a little bit more compassionate for the people. And I, and I haven't lived here my entire life, but for the people who have made this place their home, and have put everything they had, financially and emotionally, into their places, you could do us a great favor by answering some of our concerns about infrastructure. How about the water that's supposed to be brought in from Wabash River? Where's that going to go through? Is that going to go through my property and impact me? What about electricity for the plant? Where's that going to come from? How long is that going to take to implement? Are we going to have power lines across these peoples in my acreage? These are things we'd like to have answered, and we have not heard one word from you people about them. So think about that, please, as you go forward with this travesty.
Leave your comments. Is your testimony?
My name's Don Halliway, 3338 North 150 West. I've just got a question of what my property value, I'm up there where you're actually going to annex on the west side, and then on the south side of me. What's that going to do for my property value? Then my neighbor to the south, he's going to be annexed on three sides there. So now we've got industrial on two sides, and he's going to have it on three sides of him. So what's, I mean, what's it going to do for property value?
So this isn't a back and forth? I mean, none of us are certified appraisers, we couldn't answer that question for you.
That's it. And then Ken, I've got a question for you. Won't you?
Sir, it's not a, you can state your testimony, it's not a back and forth discussion.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments?
Hi, my name's Jeff Newman, 218 North Park Street, but also have a second house that we're in the midst of remodeling, out at 195 North 200 West. So I hope to be moving in there soon. We'll see. Some of my questions, or things that I hope that are being discussed and thought about, have already been asked. So I'm going to try to not go over those. But I have some questions about if the IEDC ends up owning this property, if it's zoned industrial, is it then taxed industrial at the rates that they've purchased it for? So how does the taxation on that property happen? And does that help pay for some of the huge expense and services that we're going to have to provide, whether it's police, fire, you know, upcoming utilities, et cetera? So are those things, it sounds like those haven't been discussed at all yet, haven't been offered up. So it goes back to some of the financial planning that's been asked. What happens to the properties that the IEDC ends up purchasing? Are those houses demolished, so that they don't become havens for meth labs, or for, you know, kids to go out to party, to be vandalized, et cetera? So how are those properties going to be taken care of and managed? Or how is that land going to be prepared, so these companies that may or may not be coming are going to take a look at them and say, yes, you know, this is great, and you know, it's a big flat field of grass, so we want to build there? So what's that going to look like? DORAL was recently at the Indiana Economic Summit, I'm sure everybody's familiar with, so it's a huge solar farm of, I forget, is it 13,000 acres in northwestern Indiana? Is that a company that's going to come here and want to either do research, or is that maybe something that, that's how they'll want to power their particular facility? Wind power is another option. SMRs, if anybody's familiar with the small modular reactors, that's an burgeoning industry that's going to have to be, they're going to have to build those somewhere. They only take a few acres. But then, maybe they're going to build those here, and they're going to go to Synergy Site, or somewhere that's being, you know, taken offline. Those are the kinds of things, is that acceptable use for this area? Or should those be exceptions, that it's not going to be used for that? City-county planning, I think most recently, the 2020 January approval had that as mixed use, single-family and multifamily. We've got a housing shortage. Mayor Gentry, you know that, you've mentioned, you're looking for a house yourself. Where is that housing going to end up being then? If that's not part of what's already been approved for south of Lebanon, where's the housing for all of these potential people? But then also for other people that come in, or that are just looking to expand? Where's that going to happen? So what's going to happen to the current plan that was approved in 2020? Or how's that going to be revisited? The trail, I think it's kind of been discussed, that that's not considered developable, you know, so that won't be something that's developed, but it will sit in the midst of a 7,000-acre industrial park, not in the midst of the single-family and mixed-family developments that were on the city planning for the 2020 thing. So how's that add into the city? Or are there going to have to be other areas developed to do that? Definitely worried about infrastructure. 32 already gets really crazy. I understand you're not looking at warehousing and logistics, but if these companies are manufacturing stuff, or just simply have employees, it's going to be in and out of there. So 32 is going to be a mess, more so than it is for a long time, until it's built up by the state. So what's some of the planning there, as well as 300 North, or other access, in and What happens if in, I think the planner mentioned, you know, three to five years, things change? What happens if in three to five years, this just doesn't come to fruition? It doesn't happen. Does it go back to county land? Is it now within the city's boundaries? And so now, what are you going to do with it? Or is there thought about, oh, if it doesn't happen in three, five, 10 years, it reverts back to what we originally planned on? The other thing I'll say, I'm, I simply have a lot of questions. I don't necessarily want to see it happen, but I understand there could be some positive benefits. So if there's anybody here that wants to speak positive about this, go ahead.
Leave your comments. Further public comment?
Break of chair.
Here he is. I promised to get you one. Hi, Joyce Douglas, 409 North Murdian Street, Lebanon, Indiana. I hear all these people, and I see their beautiful land, their property. I don't own any property in the area. I don't have any relatives in the area. But I have a few questions, a few things you might want to think about, that some of it you're aware of. I watch some of the meetings sometimes, and the Lebanon Utility Meeting caught my attention, the last Lebanon Utility Meeting. Everyone should watch that. And there's a slide presentation, and what I handed out was some of the slides in that presentation that caught my attention. Water for number one in development and usage, Grasslands Development. You'll hear a lot of that, it's called Grasslands Development, AKA Lilly. Estimated sanitary EDUs, 2,826. Water EDUs, nothing's reported, but it was asked, where, where is that figure? You as elected officials representing everyone here, and elsewhere throughout our community, should have many questions regarding the utilities of this company. From the Lebanon Utility Public Report, the remaining wastewater plant capacity is about 6,000 EDUs. Eli Lilly Grasslands Development will generate 2,826 EDUs, which is 47% of the remaining capacity. Lebanon's current water supply capacity is about 4.60 million gallons per day. The current water usage is about 1.66 million gallons per day, leaving a remaining capacity of about 2.94 million gallons per day. Lilly will use 1 million gallons per day, which is 34% of the remaining capacity. So my question is, water. How much will, and wastewater. How much will the availability fees be covered by Lilly? Or are you going to put in IRS to rate payers of Lebanon? It's about $15 million, from what I've read from other places. Can these fees be waived as part of the deal, if you make the deal? IEDC, I always love EDCs that come out with the average salary, because if you go to nd.com on some of the things you've passed in the past, you'll Because if you go to nd.com and some of the things you've passed in the past, you'll see that the salaries aren't matched up to what they give you the biggest figure of because it's from the top down. 500 employees and all these people infected, two industrial buildings, all these people with beautiful homes and farms. It doesn't make sense. Sometimes the brass ring or the gold ring's not as shiny as it projects to be. And you have to really stop and think the effects it has on the city. And someone prior to me brought up the non-capital services and capital, the capital services, which are, you know, well, roads, water, police, fire, ENT. All that adds up. And who does that add up on? The taxpayers. You think Eli Lilly's going to pick up with that? Uh-uh. I don't think so. But I have known and I've read about Eli Lilly in other places, and I'm not bashing Eli Lilly or IEDC. I'm just saying, some things aren't what they seem. And sometimes they'll bring in utilities, sometimes they'll pay for them. Mayor Gentry, you gave a good interview at WTAH on the day of the planning commission meeting. And your whiteboard was facing the camera. And I always, I see things that I pay attention to. And on that whiteboard is Whitestown Utilities. And so I just wonder, I've been told through discussions with you that Lafayette would supply the water and the state would pay and cover that. Again, we have connections and who pays for that? Again, how much, for how long, for as long as Lilly's there? But their water usage is huge. And I'm going to come to the next meeting and tell you the reports from comparable places who have been well established with Lilly and the water usage. Because it's very, very important. I, I don't want problems with our utilities. And I don't think you do too either. So I really want you to carefully go over the details of this plan and reconsider, even though I know supervoluntary, and the, now wind it up. The public information has been horrific. Huntington, Indiana has a better website than Lebanon, Indiana. They have what, annexations spelled out, what it is, frequently asked questions. They even have the list of companies with voluntary, supervoluntary. Mailing, Ben, Reynolds.
Joyce, you have six and a half minutes.
Okay. Can you please do your mailing better? I put in a public records request and I hope I get it back from you soon. And I want to ask you, Mayor, why when it was in the planning department, you could, a person could, like me, could go up and see the rec, read receipt of certified mailing very simply? Now I hear I have to put in a public record request to come and see it through your department. And I hope I don't get a letter from the attorney or email saying it's not titled correctly.
Seven minutes, Joyce.
Okay. So I'm going to end with, while you consider the cost to benefit ratio, please consider these people affected, consider the bigger picture and consider the very details of this project. Who does it benefit? I know about property taxes and how great it is for you guys, but farmland and these people are priceless. Thank you.
Thank you, Joyce. Any additional public comments?
Good evening. My name is Peggy Daggy and I live at 2005 West 250 North, Lebanon, Hazel Ridge Avenue. I am just coming up to kind of clear up a little bit of housekeeping that we needed to do. When Alan Moeller passed out his packets to everyone, there is a piece of paper in there, a document in there of a map of an alternative development site that we're proposing. We'd just like for everybody to take a look at that and give it some thought. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment?
My name is Linda Farinbach and I live at 5405 North 150 West. We have lived there for 39 years. I have two questions and a comment. First, why are the people wanting to be annexed into the city of Lebanon? I have never heard of someone living in the country hoping that someday their property could be in the city. Also, I have never seen any of those properties come up for sale, so it seems to me they were pretty content. They're beautiful properties and well cared for. So that makes me question the voluntary request for annexation. Secondly, I have heard that once the property in question is annexed into the city, the people requesting annexation will sell their homes and move. So how does that make sense? Why ask to be in the city limits and then move? Again, this makes me question the voluntary request for annexation. Third, I think it is apparent to all of us that there has been a great lack of transparency with respect to the discussions and decisions made about the Lilly build and the other associated projects west of I-65. Transparency concerning key considerations which greatly impact our families would include air, water, and noise pollution controls, the impact of traffic on our roads from employees and company vehicles of Lilly and other companies, the use of buffer zones with suitable vegetation, surrounding the buildings to mitigate the sharp contrast between industrial buildings and our beautiful rural areas, and the impact on our ability to train and keep the employee talent that companies like Lilly are looking for. When there is nondisclosure and a lack of transparency, it makes it hard to trust that the decisions being made are in the best interests of the Boone County residents. In closing, I do want to say that I do respect the rights of the homeowners to sell their homes. That is their decision to make. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comments. Any additional public comment? Last chance. This time I'll close the public hearing on ordinance 2019, or 2022-19. Would the applicant like to respond to any of the comments made at this time?
Just quickly, Mayor, thank you for the opportunity. Thank you for all that came out. Do appreciate the dialogue, the time, the research you spent on this. The public policy nerd in me really appreciates the dialogue. Just want to reemphasize, we are talking about the 1,400 acres. Understand there are a lot of questions as we look west, and that is going to be an ongoing dialogue that we have with both county commissioners, with this council, with the mayor. And so for the purpose of tonight, you know, we want to refine the discussion to those 1,400 acres, knowing there's going to be more community engagement to come as we look further west. So thank you again for your time and consideration of this.
You, David. Any questions, discussion from council?
Yeah, just a comment. I really appreciate people coming up and explaining everything. And we do a fiscal plan. And I got a question for Ben. I mean, typically the annexations are smaller. The fiscal plan sometimes gets to us before the second reading. In this case, it seemed like maybe the fiscal plan should have been here before the first reading. And I'm just wondering, where is that? What, what's the progress of that?
Yeah. I actually requested an update from Baker Tilly earlier today on that. I expect to have it within, within a few days so we can begin distributing it, have it available in our office and begin distributing to the council. We want to make sure that we've got as much time as possible for everybody to review that beforehand. It is a big area. We did the same thing with Waterford, also a significant sized area, looking at additional road capacity that would have to be maintained, additional police, fire services that have to be provided to this area. Those are all incorporated into that as, as was suggested earlier. So that, that'll all be in there in terms of the incremental costs associated with providing those additional services and capital services to that area. So that'll be available in short order. I'm waiting for an update from them on how quickly, but we're making, we're going to make sure we get it out as, as soon as we absolutely can and make sure you guys have a chance to review that. Certainly we're looking at both the revenue and cost sides of that. There are revenue projected.
A lot of people had a lot of questions regarding that. So when can they get the information?
I, I will, I, I, I'm not sure how I would get it out to them. I don't have, I don't have contact information, but I, I will make sure if somebody wants to call our office later this week, if it's available, I'll make sure to have it available.
Will it be on the website?
We can post it.
Yeah, we can post it.
I think in this case, we need to do that. I was going to, Mike took all my comments. Great minds think alike, maybe. The only correction would be we, we've always had a fiscal plan before second reading. I don't know how our friends in other communities do it, but we always do that.
Yeah, I know, I know we have, but in this case, I, maybe we should have had it before the first one, just so everybody, we were more transparent. We're not trying to be secretive or anything.
That's, that's a little hard to do when you don't necessarily know what the planning commission is going to recommend from a zoning perspective. That's the, that's the one hang up that, you know, what if it's, if it's zoned, single family, right, it's a different impact than if it's zoned industrial, right? So you can't really create a finalized document, I mean, less than a week after the planning commission, you know, recommends a zoning to us essentially.
Yeah, but, but I see their, their perception of the unnecessary speed of this entire thing. I mean, that, I, I can see their perception.
It's no different than any other annexation we've done.
No, I'm, I'm talking about perceptions of what people have, a perception of they didn't have the information. So I apologize for that, just from my standpoint. So we, we need to rectify that before this next reading. We need to make sure that these questions have been, you know, responded to in a timely manner.
I will point out one thing in terms of schedule. The state statute dictates the schedule to some perspective. Once we've received a petition for annexation, we have to have it, we're required by state law to have it on a council's agenda within 30 days. So that, that somewhat dictates how quickly we get it on your agenda from the time that we receive the petition in our office.
Well, I'm sure there's reasons for everything. I'm just, I'm just talking about perception based on what I've heard.
Yeah.
So, and that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to manage perception so we can manage frustration.
Sure.
Any additional public comment or council comment? Any further questions for Ben?
I was going to just address a couple, a couple of questions or comments that came up. Let me pull it up. One, there was a comment about the existing zoning in the area. And I didn't, I didn't show this prior, but let me get back in my folder here. Let me zoom in. So there's a question about the zoning of the north versus the west. And this, if they want to pull the map up again, this will give you an area. So this area west that you see in pink in here, which is, is the area being annexed between 32 and the Big Four Trail, that's already zoned industrial in the county. So by us zoning that industrial, we're actually maintaining the existing zoning that's already in the county. This area to the north here is not zoned agricultural, that's actually zoned high-density single-family residential, so something non-agricultural. So again, while we're obviously changing from high-density residential to general industrial, it's not zoned agricultural. So you don't actually get into agricultural zoning until you get north of 300, which is what this area you see in here. So actually, the primary, the primary area that we're talking about in terms of the annexation falls in this area, which is actually is currently not zoned agricultural. So, and part of it is actually pink, which is industrial zoning. So we're actually, and some of these areas mimicking the existing zoning of the area. Couple of, there was a question about the application of prohibited uses. That will be applicable on the entire annexation area and not just the site associated with Eli Lilly. So that, the entire 1,400 acres, those prohibited, that list of prohibited uses will apply across that entire 1,400 acres. It's the intention of the city to make sure that that extends to any further annexations related to the Leap District to the west. Make sure that we're incorporating those, what the city intends for the uses along with what the state intends for the uses in this area. That's, we're, we're very much concerned about what uses go out here just as much as anybody else is. There's some questions about how these sites are going to be designed. We have an extensive list of development standards that deal with all things related to how the building looks, how tall it can be, what kind of landscaping is required, what sort of buffers are required. Those are all in the ordinance already, and there's extensive buffers required for any uses like this in the general industrial zoning district. We're going to make sure that all those are going to apply in this entire area. We have no intention of offering any variances associated with development standards for this area. So, so there are a number of things that we'll be able to address as these come to us in the future. We, of course, can't review those things until it's in, in the city and annexed first. But when these plans come to us, there will be an additional opportunity to review those, make sure they meet all the applicable development standards, which are extensive and cover all those things that I mentioned. We talked about the fiscal plan a little bit already. There was a question about how, you know, housing and revisiting the plan, our, our future planning. We're already talking about that. Certainly a lot of things have happened even since 2019 and 2020 when we just did our comp plan update that we couldn't have, we didn't envision or include in our planning at that time. So we have a number of things that, from Waterford to the Fieldhouse project to the state project that have come to us just in the last three years that we didn't necessarily contemplate when we did that plan three, three years ago. So certainly, yeah, looking at, you know, how, how are we going to accommodate these things from a thoroughfare planning perspective and other land uses that might be necessary to serve these areas? Those are things that are very much top of mind for us moving forward as, as these projects move forward.
Ben, I believe the county is redoing their comp plan too?
I have, I have, yeah, I've, I've, I saw in the newspaper that they've, they've talked about revisiting.
Are you going to try to coordinate a little bit, some stuff with them?
Certainly can as much, as much as possible. I know they're looking at updating their comprehensive plan and unified development ordinance to address things as it would relate to whether it's this project or other opportunities that come. So we're, there's certainly going to be opportunities for us to work with them on that.
Any further questions for Ben?
Yeah, just one more comment. I'm aware of the long-term planning that all the departments do. But it seems to me like a lot of the folks aren't aware of that. So I believe that, that information should be available on our website so that they know, you know, that we are thinking 10 years, 15 years, or even longer, and that, you know, it's, we have plans and we're working on things. But you got to communicate it.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's all about managing perception, managing frustration and so forth. So I think you need to put that on your agenda, if you would, please.
Yeah, that, we certainly will do more than what we already are. I mean, we, our comp plan is actually a web-based comp plan. We don't even have a print, a print document for our comprehensive plan, so it's available for anybody to view. You can find a link of it, link to it from our planning department webpage. Certainly the unified development ordinance is out there too, if anybody wanted to attempt to dig through that and try to find all the development standards that will be applicable to all these sites, it'll all be in there in terms of architecture, landscaping, et cetera. So we'll, we'll definitely go back and kind of look at other documents that we have. I know Kevin's got the thoroughfare plan on his website and other documents related to that. So we do have a lot of it out there, but we'll make sure we get as much out there as we can.
Okay, thanks. Looking back over comments, I think something that keeps coming up is this whole idea of voluntary annexation. I think from a public education standpoint, I'm kind of putting you on, on the spot here, but we do this quite a bit. We've done this quite a bit because there's a lot of land coming into the city. Explain kind of just a broad overview, what a voluntary annexation is, and more importantly, why would a property owner voluntarily want to become part of the city?
Sure. You know, to terms of the procedurally, we'll receive a petition from a property owner, whether it's one property owner or multiple property owners. Obviously, in this case, it was multiple property owners requesting annexation to the, to the city. Those have to be signed by that property owner saying, hey, we're requesting annexation to the city. As to why they made the decision to do that, I don't know all of the ins and outs of, of why that property owner made that decision, but there, there is some benefit to being annexed to the city. In terms of this case, my guess is most of them probably have some sort of deal to sell their property. And in most cases of annexation, that's likely what it is, is somebody's offered to purchase their property, to develop it in some way, shape, or form, and there's a benefit to being included in the city to do that, either from a zoning and development perspective or from the perspective of providing utilities to that site. And that's, that's usually what we see. There are some other cases where there's benefits just from a zoning perspective being in the city, but most of our annexations we've seen, it's related to some sort of development opportunity.
So as a, as a part of the sale, the buyer is requesting that the seller get their property annexed before they can close?
That's typically, there's a due diligence period. Any, any buyer will say, hey, here's, here's X, Y, and Z, that's, that in order for us to complete this, the purchase of your property, these are things we expect to be in place before we close. There may be any number of things, maybe annexation, and maybe doing environmental assessments of the site. A lot of times those due diligence periods, to make sure that there's, they can get the proper zoning to do what they want to do, those sorts of things. So, yeah, there's always a due diligence period associated with a purchase, and there could be any number of things that may be conditions of that purchase.
So then we've only...
So Ben, we've only done voluntary annexations since I've been the mayor. Can you explain what involuntary annexation includes and why that's different than this situation?
Yeah, so the difference there is, I mean, it's been a long time since the city's done any, annexation includes something that was involuntary. So in this case, we've got a certain number of property owners, all of them have submitted a petition for annexation within the boundaries of the annexation area. The case of an involuntary annexation means that there's an annexation area that includes properties where they have not provided that petition requesting annexation to the city. The process changes in terms of review periods and wait periods, et cetera, as it relates to an involuntary annexation, and the biggest thing is the wait period after the, after the potential annexation would be adopted by the council is, I think, 100, or 90 days or something like that, I think it is, rather than 30 days. So it's a much different process that you need to go through if there's any property that's included in the annexation where you don't have a petition from the property owner.
So theoretically, the city could be annexing properties that don't want to be part of the city if we want it to be?
Yeah, theoretically, we can. It's a different process. That's not been the city's policy, obviously, over the last number of years to do that, and in this case, it's 100% voluntary, so we're following that process.
Thank you. Want to clarify that?
Ben, based upon the traditional fiscal plans that we see and the size of this, is there going to be anything different in the fiscal plan that we need to look at that would address some of the concerns?
The format will be similar to what you've seen in the past. Certainly, there's, in each one of those things, you're going to see similar, the closest I can equate to it is the Waterford development. That was actually larger than this annexation. So you're going to see that there's going to be more costs associated with the services side of it, providing services, certainly. You know, there's obviously a lot more streets that need to be plowed. There's additional territory that the police and fire are going to need to be able to oversee. So you're going to see all those costs associated with that in there. A small, single-property annexation, you see very small incremental cost increases, so it'll be a little bit different. The revenue side's going to be a lot different, too, because in the Waterford case, we were seeing, you know, a significant investment being made that was going to generate additional property taxes. That's the same thing here. You're going to see that there's going to be significant revenue associated with it as well.
Ben, I hate to put you on the spot, but you seem to be the only one answering a question right now, but how, and maybe Mr. Rosenberg might want to jump in here. How is it going to work when the state is basically designing and building everything? Are we going to be able to collect road impact fees? They're supposedly, they're going to be, are they paying for everything? Do we collect the fees? How, some of these little details, you know?
Local regulations.
Rent on fees for water, sewer, things like that. I mean, we don't have these answers. People ask about these things, you know, we don't have these answers. These things we'll get in our comp or our fiscal plan.
Yeah.
We'll get some information there, but, you know, it's just curious how, all that's really, there's so many questions of how all this is going to work.
Yeah.
You know, and...
Certainly, there's a lot of details that need to be worked out as these projects come to fruition, but the fact that the state has initiated this project changed nothing locally. We will still have our development standards and zoning standards that apply, our road and park impact fees still apply, availability fees that charge for water and sanitary sewer 11 and unbillies, those all 100% apply. So in terms, again, of generating revenue to be able to offset some of the costs, those are all going to be there.
Well, I'm assuming, I'm assuming, this is from my background a little bit, I guess, somebody's in the background doing some work already, and I'm assuming that they're already looking at our plans and things, and how we do things, and the state, whether it's not, whoever it is, or what, is trying to figure out what they're going to do and how they're going to do it.
Yeah, I know there's a lot of things happening in the background to try to figure out how, the best path forward. Certainly, we know that a lot of these types of businesses, in terms of, say, Eli Lilly, what their water and sanitary usage, we know that while we can serve it, I mean, as Joyce pointed out, we have plenty of capacity to serve them, but we do know in the future we're going to need to look for additional capacity. Those are things that I know Lebanon Utilities is already trying to figure out. I know in terms of bringing, the mayor already talked a little bit about trying to bring additional water down from the north, and those are all things that are all underway. We understand that we've got kind of this initial project that we need to be able to provide for, but there's going to be some things down the road that we're going to have to do. Those are already being discussed. We don't have any idea exactly how those are going to happen yet, but they're already, but we're trying to figure out the path forward on those.
Well, one of the things I, you've heard me talk about this before, just one thing I hate about annexation is we leave pockets. And I don't like doughnuts, where we got people that are not being annexed, or the city's going around them. It just creates problems. It just creates problems.
The other option is forcing those people in, that they don't want to be...
I understand. I understand.
Luckily, in this case, in over 1,400 acres, there's only a couple properties that are in the middle of this that weren't included in the annexation.
Well, yeah, but I see properties up and down 150 or 300. They're not going to want to be annexed when the rest of that comes in. Some day, I mean, some day, that, some day, we have to be honest, that's going to go, with a building up there, turn north of 250, that's going to go to 3, that's going to go all the way to 300 in time.
Yeah.
That's going to go there. So all those people around 150 wet road are not going to want to be annexed in the city.
And that's their, that's their right to not be.
That's their right. I mean, I agree, that's their right, but it just, it really creates problems.
So are you saying we need to annex them?
Well, I've been saying that for years, we need to.
Okay, we'll agree to disagree, because I'm not a big fan of involuntary annexation.
Any further questions for Ben, council? Okay. Ordinance 2022-19 has been round for first reading. We'll take that up in our next meeting on July 11th, which is at 7:15 p.m. So any further discussion to come before the council on new business?
No, sir.
Any announcements or general discussion? Okay, move on to claims. We entertain motion concerning the claims.
Move to approve the claims.
We've motioned approve from Brent.
Second.
Second from Sierra. All serious, aye?
Aye.
Disposed? We entertain motion to adjourn.
Question?
Yep.
What's the date to see this again?
July 11th.
Do you think that's a little too soon before the...
Fiscal plan?
Fiscal plan.
We'll have it see you any time.
Is there a rush?
We always do this in two readings, and this is the next, we actually have an extra week in the middle with the fourth, so...
We don't always have to do it that way. We could wait a month or something, and just allow everybody enough time to look at the fiscal plan. I'm just saying, the fiscal plan's going to make...
Whether we hold a vote or not, that's always a council decision, right?
If I...
We always need a motion to vote on it anyway, right? So it's always a council decision whether we vote or not.
Yeah.
So, well, it'll be on second reading on the 11th, and whether we choose to vote or not, will be council decision. Okay. We had a... I need a motion to adjourn?
Yes. Motion to adjourn.
We have motion adjourned. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Morse. All serious, aye?
Aye.
Disposed? All right, we are adjourned. Again, our next city council meeting is July 11th at 7:15 p.m. Have a good night.